Thank you.
Is my sound okay?
Yep, we do. Thank you for your call.
Checking one, two, three.
Recording in progress.
We can hear you for Lennox.
All right, good to go.
Yes, thank you Chair. At one o'clock we will be ready to go. Almost there, twelve fifty-nine. And do you know what?
I'll just put this here. All right, good afternoon.
Yeah, well, that's pretty.
Good afternoon. I'm Sandy McCormick and I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole for April thirtieth to order. The first item on our agenda, oh, by the way, I forgot to include that we are meeting on the traditional and ancestral territory of Tlalman Nation. So the second item on our agenda is approval of the agenda, and I would draw your attention to item number four, orders of the day, which is slightly different than normal, which is scheduled for an in-camera session at two o'clock. Director Fall.
Uh, yes, I'd like to move that the agenda be approved as presented with the exception of removing item eleven point one.
Eleven point one, okay, remember your second name now. Director Brandon, go ahead, Director Fall.
Uh, thank you. Uh, you know, I understand some of the intent behind that, but uh, the, there's no information or emotion for which the community can prepare or discuss. So the, in the, the text that's associated with the item seems, you know, not the kind of information that goes on an agenda. I would recommend uh, for Director Gisborne to use the standard of approach of making a notice of motion on issues of concern regarding the service.
Thank you, Director Fall. Director Brandon and Director Gisborne.
Uh, thanks Chair. I, I appreciate Director Fall bringing this forward. Uh, yesterday we dealt with this as well and, and uh, comments from Ellie Mina were mentioned. Um, I also attended the private meeting with Ellie at the AVICC and heard his comments and um, I don't think they were intended to take, like, this, this discussion was not intended to take place before uh, any information or even a, a, I guess a focused topic was brought forward. Um, you know, it, it leaves people ill-prepared and, and the public isn't aware of what we're discussing. Um, during the same conversation, I mentioned the fact that, that our staff had been bringing forward multiple motions for every agenda item and that we had been doing some limited conversation prior to a motion being made. And he was in quite, he was very supportive of that procedure. So I think that it's wise to have a focus, at least, you know, to have such a broad topic such as the Myrtle Pond Water System. There's just too many things to cover. Add some focus, then staff can prepare for it, the board can prepare for it, and the public can be aware of all of it. You know, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Director Brandon.
Uh, yes, uh, the reason I put this item on the agenda is I've received a number of calls and complaints from members in the Myrtle Pond Water System. There, I've gotten some good information from uh, Mr. Deveraux who is here um, about what's been going on out there. There's been discoloration. Uh, the community has been asking, you know, what are we gonna do about this? Uh, we could just keep this item on the agenda and ask for a staff report, or we have uh, a Mr. Deveraux here, we could ask him for a verbal report. And I believe that it's important for the Assembly to discuss the issue and then make a decision on how we wish to proceed. Maybe we don't want to ask for a staff report, and that's why I put this on the uh, the agenda in a fairly open-ended fashion. And back to what I was referring to yesterday about Ellie Mina is if we insist on having a motion, that's insisting on having a solution before we've identified the problem. So that's why I left this relatively open-ended. Um, the language that's under the new business is an item, it's a topic, and I would actually very much encourage the Assembly to keep it on the agenda um, out of respect for the community that has uh, been contacting me about this issue and would like some clarification on, is our, their stance on it. What are we doing?
Thank you. Thank you, Director Gisborne. Recognize the director. Oh, yeah, and then Director Salcar.
So if, if there's public concerns, is there also public correspondence and wouldn't the correspondence help inform the Assembly as to what the topic is? And if so, that might have been the more appropriate way. Excuse me.
I muted your mic.
Okay, you muted, okay.
And so that's my question. If, if it's concerns from the cut, the public, we generally have emails or correspondence or something that directs our attention to what it is they're concerned about.
So you're not speaking in favor?
I was curious about maybe there had been correspondence or not and if suggesting.
Okay, thank you. Um, Director Salcar.
Just briefly, this does sound like an operational issue, so I'm not sure why it would be brought to the board level anyway. And why couldn't it just go straight to staff to deal with through the CIO stuff? What I was wondering about one of the questions yesterday as well.
Thank you. I have not spoken yet, so I would just like to say that um, Director Gisborne, you've had every opportunity to inquire of staff regarding the status and what are the problems and how to fix them. So I would agree with those who say this conversation really isn't necessary. It could have been. So that being my two cents worth, um, who is first on the second round? I guess Director Brandon.
I just wanted to say I agree with you. I think the proper way to deal with this is to contact staff. If after conversations with staff haven't yielded the information that is required, then a notice of motion being brought forward with a more focused uh, attack on the issue, and then we can get it onto an agenda and discuss it at a later meeting.
Thank you. Um, are there, is there further discussion? Can you, Director Gisborne?
I've already been in contact with staff. I've already done that. I've already done all the things that the Assembly has been asking of me. Um, and I've received correspondence by my phone. Um, I didn't want to take that information and put it on a public agenda out of respect for people's privacy. Um, I figured if people are reaching out to the elected official about the quality of their water and the notification, um, some point, the elected officials have to actually take some leadership on this, and that's why I put this uh, forward in the manner that I did. But if the Assembly would instead wish that I uh, pose a solution before we've even discussed the problem, then I'll do that at the next meeting.
Thank you, Director Gisborne. Is there a further discussion? Seeing no hands, we will um, this question, all in favor of the. Three, and I can't see Andrew. In favor, okay, those opposed? Elliot. So the motion is carried. So minutes of March twenty-sixth, are there any errors or omissions? Any no hands motion to adopt the minimum? Brandon, in discussion, all in favor? Carry. Uh, we will move on. We're postponing orders of the day until two o'clock. So we'll begin our presentations from our volunteer fire departments, and I'm not sure, Ryan, if you want to introduce them or?
Sure, if I could. Chair, I'd like to um, introduce on my left uh, Sabre Island Volunteer Fire Chief Chris Philpott. Coming to the table, uh, Northside Volunteer Fire Chief. Malasbina Volunteer Fire Chief William Ashworth. And joining us via Zoom uh, should be LaScola Volunteer Fire Chief, uh, Richard Carles. And we're gonna ask them to each provide a, a verbal report, uh, and I think I'll go one at a time.
We've, on Savory Island, we've had a record-breaking um, uh, autumn and winter with zero call, sorry, one call, which was a very minor uh, medical call. Um, incredible. Unfortunately, April was, uh, had a different story. We had two structural fires and one catastrophic event, which resulted in two fatalities. Um, so we've been somewhat, well, over quarter one, we were not very busy at all. Um, our achievements for quarter one, we've installed a water collection system off one of our satellite halls. And so we have a fifty-six hundred gallon tank, which is now full, rainwater. So um, that's quite something. We're hoping to expand on that with the future, but unfortunately, a tank is a, something in the region of about nine thousand dollars. So we have to budget for that. Um, just of recent, we, we have um,
Just so everybody can see.
Oh, all right. Uh, we've got three, we're expecting three new recruits uh, joining us in the next couple of weeks, and uh, so we're quite excited there. Um, we seem to, the flavor on the island seems to be there's a lot of people who are now, although they're not full-time, they're coming on for four, five, six months of the year, and those are the dry season months, so they're, they're more than welcome. Um, and with regard to a lot of our roster being seasonal, I suppose our attendance numbers are all over the place, but a lot of these people are not receiving any benefits or, or, or the luxuries of, of, of uh, full-time uh, members. Uh, we have, we've had some of the full-time members in quarter one. Our numbers don't look that great because a lot of, a lot of us full-times are, they're not fully retired, they're semi-retired or still working. So, but you know, they still come to practices and, you know, I mean, I'm happy. We have a very good team. The three events that occurred in April, tremendous turnout, tremendous turnout. Um, so you know, when the pageant does go off, we do perform. But maybe some of the numbers our fire pro generates are, don't, they don't look the best. So basically, that's, that's all I've got. If any more questions or anything. Oh, there's another project on the cards, I think, Mr. Dub, which is, we're gonna welcome tremendously, and this is a fire protection dedicated to protecting the wharf, which uh, we hope to get underway, well, by year end anyway, October, uh, autumn. I'm very excited about that, very excited. So uh, yeah, things are happening. Things are happening in the right direction. We do a lot of preventative-type work. Um, the community, very good. They phoned, I had, I had two phone calls yesterday, one requesting permission to light a fire, another one, believe it or not, an archaeological concern. But we'll see how that goes. But anyway, you've just got to move some dirt off of the road because it's um, impeding our, our um, uh, ability to transport uh, uh, turn vehicles around on this particular um, eldersack on the island. So, yeah, we've got a lot on our plate and we blow through. Excuse the pun.
Um, I'm gonna ask directors if you can, your questions, so that we can hear from the other three chiefs, and then we can ask some questions as, okay?
That's, my only concern is I've got to get back to Savory, so I'm on a four o'clock water taxi, so gotta get out to London, park the vehicle and.
Ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Um, oh, yes, if we have questions. All right, so would you prefer to hear them one at a time? I just don't want to get lost in questions on one and then have to hold the others over because of our two o'clock in-camera session. But if it's your wish to ask questions now, then go for it. Director Elliot and then Director Gisborne.
Director Lennox.
Sorry, Director Lennox.
Thanks Chair, it doesn't matter who goes first. I appreciate your time and Chief Philpott would make sure you get to the water taxi. Um, you, you don't have to listen to me, you know, have a speech uh, yesterday at the board meeting. We, you know, really took the chance to thank you and your members. We mean it. Uh, wow, to have to do that type of work for us, we really appreciate that. So thank you. Um, I just a quick question around first responders versus firefighters. You, I, my uh, I think my recollection is you probably have more first responders versus folks who are, or is it a balance? Can you maybe just touch on that?
No, we've got um, well, on that call out, we had a total of fourteen come out. That was nine, nine firefighters and um, five first responders.
Wow, okay, excellent. Thank you for that. Um, and then you said you have a very good team, but I think they're an excellent team. Uh, interesting about the archaeology, just had a contact from uh, the Tlalman Nation on that about archaeology uh, and people building on islands. So again, thanks for that. I'll just, I'll tie that in when we have a meeting with them. So appreciate and let our staff know when you, when you hear these things. And then uh, yeah, I'm excited too to, to help with Simac and the department there on uh, we have it in our capital plan for the uh, Wharf project and uh, and we'll be looking forward to report to see what that looks like soon. So, thanks Chief.
No problem.
Thank you. Director Elliot.
Thank you Chair. First of all, I wanted to say um, um, thank you so much for uh, all the work you've been doing on Savory and particular in recent uh, tragic events and how hard that must be on your folks. My question is um, whether there is some way, something you would like the board to know would help you in supporting anything going forward. Is there something you need from us that's different than what we currently do?
The support we're getting out to, from, from Melanie and um, counseling or what have you is tremendous.
Thank you.
So we're, we're over-satisfied. We, we had a two-hour session um, a couple of Sundays ago and we see, we're fine, we're fine. We're, we're looking out, we're, we're looking after each other too. We had a, we had a combined um, uh, practice the other day and we ended up with a little social and flip some burgers on the barbecue and we're a good team.
Good job. Thanks, Director Elliot.
Oh, no, I was just gonna, no, I was just gonna ask, we do them individually and then, your Linux was.
Are there any other questions regarding Savory? Yes, Director Fall.
You're muted. Director Fall, you're muted.
Director Fall, you are muted.
Oh, now I'm not muted. Am I unmuted now? Sorry. Thank you. I, I just wanted to thank uh, uh, Chief Philpott for traveling down from Savory. I know we're all busy, all the chiefs, but, but uh, you know, I know coming down from your, for your whole day to come before us is uh, taking the whole day for you. And I really appreciate it. I think having uh, all the fire chiefs come before us. I haven't seen this before in, in my seven years so far, and I think it's really good. And I just want to follow up on what uh, Director Elliot said, which is, you know, if there's any, any issues that uh, that are, that are, you know, issues that are needed and things that might help the board, because you know, of course, there's a bit of a, you know, we want to minimize the disconnect between, you know, the budgets that get developed with, with input from you, and, and you know, you're coming from the departments and, you know, us finalizing it. So I think that's um, you know, a process that can help us understand needs and so on, and, and you know, I, I'm sure there could be lots of other questions on specifics. But I think uh, uh, you know, hearing, you know, for example, the fire protections for the wharf, we know, we, we talked about that here, and I think that's uh, really got good to hear from your point of view. So mostly just to thank you for traveling down and coming before us and presenting.
Hey, Director Fall. Okay, any further questions on Savory? If not, who goes next?
Uh, Northside. The uh, incidents for the first quarter were uh, structure fire, one.
Sorry, which fire department are you?
Northside.
Northside, okay.
Uh, one structure fire, one rescue and safety, eight first responders, one ambulance assist, three motor vehicle incidents, three public service and three false alarms. The uh, we have thirty-seven volunteers at this time. Thirty-two volunteers attend training. This, then that quarter, twenty-two volunteers attended above sixty percent. Uh, we, that training was fifteen fire practices, twenty uh, twenty-eight other training events, including first responder, air brakes, electrical safety and WMS. We uh, fire safety meetings are for uh, OHNS is uh, average five volunteers per OHNS meeting. Uh, and officers meetings, two officers meetings, the eight officers attending. So uh, I'd like to show you a little, a video at this time, maybe a couple. This was uh, actually Texada Island firefighters came over to the live fire facility for a week's run. And this is the training they got, it was outsourced to uh, what was the name of the? Diamond, yeah, Dynamics uh, fires. Training.
Fire department too, right?
This is the junior firefighter program that we started uh, two years ago now. This is the second year of it and uh, but we've taken kids from eleven to uh, eighteen and, and they attend practices and learn skills. We figured that if we're gonna ever get volunteers in the community, it's time to start them at a young age where they show a little bit of interest. This is the last tender shuttle we did out in Malasbina inlet there. The boat is.
Okay, thank you very much. That was most interesting. Um, I think I see Director Lennox and then Director Brandon.
Yeah, thanks Chair and uh, thanks Chief. I, I'm lucky. I get a couple of chiefs to thank here. Uh, proud of both departments. Uh, airbags chief, I, I noticed we're now, uh, we've had a couple of airbags out of the Lund Hall parking lot. Is that now obviously uh, kind of a new, not that we ever want to use it, but a new benefit to the community, isn't it?
Yes, it is. And uh, we have a couple of trees to remove. Uh, the neighbors admitted or told us that we can take a couple of trees down on her property. And then we have two more on the other end of our, of the fire hall property that have to be removed, but the air ambulance come in and it really is quite a machine, this one. It throws rocks like you wouldn't believe.
Yeah. Well, I, I just wanted to mention that because it's a, it's a benefit to the community to have that uh, timely uh, care. Thanks. Um, really cool to hear about the ten trainees. I was gonna ask how many in the youngsters group is, if you ever want to retire, you're gonna need to do that. So uh, thanks for, for thinking ahead. Uh, and then good to see the fire training center in use there and um, just, you know, I mentioned this when I first uh, saw that and we, we heard about it um, that it required, you know, you guys step up on the department to support other people who are training at the center. So you know, that requires extra work from you. So, thanks. Thanks Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Lennox.
Uh, thank you Chair. Uh, I just want to thank everybody first off for showing up today. I really appreciate getting these updates. And I, I, I regret that I don't recall the, you got a name for, but I saw the C can stacked there for training purposes. And that you had the uh, Texada Island firefighters in. How often do you get to utilize that training?
We've used it uh, ourselves numerous times now for different things, but uh, we were, we're trying to get us uh, live fire set up for this year. We were gonna do it in May, but the people, the trainers couldn't come up to do it. So we're gonna do it in the fall now because uh, fire season's gonna show, gonna show itself pretty soon, and we don't want to be burning when nobody else can, so.
Right, yeah, of course. And uh, I know you had Texada on there. Would you, uh, is there interest from the other fire halls as well to?
Texada so far, and uh, Gillies Bay, they've come over.
Hmm.
And uh, uh, I don't know, nobody else is really calm and said they want to use it, but they haven't set up a date yet and uh, so yeah, there's interest for sure.
Right, great to see that infrastructure utilized.
Really, thank you. So I'm a Lund person too. I don't know if you know that. Um, so I did see some common firefighters in your video. So did they just have some other people show up during an, an exercise where you were? Did, did you have multiple fire departments come and practice on a, on a single day or?
No, we haven't really done much of that. No, just, just ourselves.
Saw Lydia there and she's had the calm and fire hat on.
Well, that's uh, she's in both departments.
Oh, okay, okay.
She had the, she had the Northside hat on.
Oh, did she? Okay. I was sure I saw it anyway. Thanks. Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, thank you. Are there further questions? Andrew, Director Fall.
Yeah, thank you. I, thank you for the, for the presentation and, and the video. I guess I have a basic question about the video, uh, which is great. So two, two simple questions, and I'll ask them both. One is, uh, would it be possible to get a link for that? I think it would be really great if that was on, linked on our website. It looked like maybe it was a, a, the, in the Northside Facebook site or something. But I think it'd be really good to have that on our, uh, on our QRD website. But I guess the other question related is, do you, where do you show that? Like, do you, do you go into schools and show that? I think it would be, you know, the, especially for the junior, the junior firefighter boot camp. I think it would be really great if that was shown in uh, you know, elementary and secondary. No, and any schools would be great, but those are the two questions.
No, we haven't gone to schools or anything yet, but uh, I did, there was interest from town uh, uh, junior firefighters at the end of this year. I guess where they put the the uh, video was online, the kids saw it and they wanted to come. And so next year, they, we might get more kids from town coming out. Other than that, I don't know.
That's great. Cause I know there, there um, you know, when people see things like that, that makes a connection, and then they, people see that and they say, hey, I want to try that, and especially when they see young people doing that. So I guess if, if it's possible to get a, a link to that, um, maybe if you let our, our staff know if it's possible, that'd be really great. I would like to be able to uh, share it on, on the skid, because I think even on, on our island, for people to see that kind of work uh, is really nice. Thank you.
Yeah, to pay you back on uh, Director Elliot's uh, question and comment, um, so you got some members that are also uh, members of the Tlalman Fire Department. Um, is that a, is that a noticeable amount or is it just a couple?
There is uh, two. Yeah. Uh, then uh, you know, they, they've offered up training for them, those people for, through that, so that it, it works both ways, right?
Okay, and I guess I got another question um, for the fire chief from Savory, where you've got a number of uh, seasonal folks that, you know, come up during the summer. Uh, are some of those folks members of departments in other communities where they're off in the winter working? Just curious.
Uh, no, uh, no. The other fire departments, no. Um, but we do have a full-time member who is um, he was, I think he was deputy chief at um, in Delta, because I retired. He is a major asset to us now, uh, knowledge, that's great. Um, there are, in fact, surprisingly, there's quite a few ex-firemen on island, but they haven't come forward. But you know, when the, if it ever hits a fan, they, they'll probably come out.
Yeah, it's, it's wonderful when you can get uh, crewed folks that are already pre-trained. Uh, that's it for me.
Okay, thanks. So I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation. And if I can just add one little comment that I once shared with the Texada departments, and that is, that I hope I never need to call you, but I'm really glad to know you're there. Thank you. Who's next?
Me.
Me. Yes.
With all computer.
We get you on the camera. You're with Malaspena?
Yes, my name is, uh, William Ashworth. I'm with Malaspena Fire Department. We operate south of Powell River. Um, not quite to Sultry Bay, cause they're excluded from our area, but. Uh, we cover quite a bit of ground. I do have some stats here we can run through. Um. You know, for our call volume, where our call volume is, uh, is up and we're on track to be well over three hundred calls this year. Um. We had in the first quarter, two structure fires, two chimney fires, a grass fire, three rubbish fires. Fifty-eight first responders, three ambulance assists, six motor vehicle incidents. Four public service and two false alarm. That are numbers. So. Our first responder calls are making up seventy-one percent of our call volume. And that is, uh, I believe trending upwards, right? So. Um. We do have, we do have a lot going on there and as the population is increasing, so are the demands on our department and as. B C ambulance is increasing their demands. So our it's on our department and our and our members too. So. We've had to recently upgrade and I think we all have had to upgrade our first responder programs that we have more responsibilities. Um, so while all those calls are increasing, our. Membership isn't, uh, at full strength yet, right? So we. We had a bit of a decrease in membership that we're trying to sort out, but right now we're sitting at, uh. Eight full-service fire officers, six full-service firefighters for a total of fourteen. Actual firefighters. We have three interior firefighters and five non-certified. Certified oftentimes they can do traffic control or. Uh, they'll be ready with their first responder ticket. So they start going to those calls. And we have seven probationary recruits at this time, so total of twenty-nine active members. So we're doing okay, but those numbers for the call volume should be a little higher. Call's working on it. It's ebbs and flows. That's what's going on with Malaspena.
Thank you. Um, are there questions of directors? Director Lennox, Director Gisborne.
Yeah. I I can let Director Gisborne go first if you like.
No, no, go ahead, Director Lennox.
Thanks. Thanks, uh, Bill, for your service. Appreciate it. Um. I just a couple of questions. You mentioned a couple of your stats. I understand the first responders, but what's the difference for, uh, ambulance assist versus first responder? Maybe you could help us out there.
Ambulance assist, the ambulance would usually be, uh, dispatched to a scene and we won't get that because it doesn't meet the criteria. When they get to the scene thinking they didn't need us, then all of a sudden they do. That's when they call an ambulance assist.
Very good. Thank you for that. And then, uh. Secondly, um, you mentioned you the number of full-service firefighters that you have. Does that impact your ability to do an interior attack or rescue or any 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 response, uh, impacts there?
It does absolutely. Um. We have been, uh, relying on the fact that we have a mutual aid agreement with Powell River. So we get, uh, in a bind and we can't make an interior attack. We. We know that we have backup coming. We can still proceed, but if we don't have that, uh, that ability to call for, uh, additional resources. We can't, uh, often do very much about the fire itself.
Okay, thanks. Uh, it was just for the other directors too about, you know, how many people it takes to enter a building versus, uh, having to remain outside. But. Thanks, uh, for the reminder on the mutual aid. Thanks again for your service.
Director Gisborne.
Recruitment and retention. It seems, uh, that's the big challenge for Malaspena and for anyone watching, um, Malaspena has two halls. Um, so a larger catchment area. As you're probably aware, we're going through a statutory service review. I think yesterday we passed a a motion sending a bunch of recommendations to staff for a staff report. And, uh, one of those is, you know, having. Formal meetings between chiefs and directors to kind of get a better understanding of of kind of what's going on on the ground. And one of them is also, uh. The, um, like crafting the budget for individual halls with a better understanding earlier on. And, um, I'm just wondering. What can we as a board do? Help with recruitment and retention out of the hall because, you know, when you get those low numbers, uh, anytime you have a team with small. It puts more strain on the remainder of the team that's out there and that can. People to potentially leave. So that's that's where I have a large concern. Uh, how can we help? Barbecues or?
That's a good question. Uh, our recruitment and retention program is actually, uh, fairly well executed. We're. Take care of each other quite well and, uh. We have a lot of social gatherings. We have a social club and, uh. That we also have the mental health support from the regional district already. And so, cause that's often, uh, a cause for, uh, membership failure is. We get stressed about. Alls they've been on or things they've straight that they weren't expecting. So it's good to have all those supports in place and we do utilize them. That's a big question, Mark. So maybe I'll have something ready for you next time.
That that's fine. And then, uh, another question I have is. There there's a lot of folks out in area B and I presume area C that they would like to, you know, support the hall, but they may not want to. Or join the hall because they may not necessarily be able. Um, are there other avenues that folks can do to participate, you know, like maybe flip burgers or or something like? Other ways that they can be supportive. And I know some folks, they know they've got water tanks or ponds and they're going like, hey, if the. All ever needs us, you know, come and take the water from my pond. And so there's kind of. Out of those, how do the community members link up with the service? Because like Director McCormick said, a lot of us we want to support, but we hope you never have to come out to our place. Um.
Yeah, so I mean, community members reach out, you know, quite often. Our water sources we've identified and there's gates that people give us to to make sure and we do site surveys to make sure we know where we're going and have access. So we do have quite a bit of community engagement and we try to continue with that, but. As far as having members of the community participate in the fire. Department's training or functions, it gets a little bit, uh, bit dicey because you do want to have everybody with a certain level of, uh, training and understanding before they. Are, um. The work area, right?
Absolutely. They gotta go through training if they're gonna show up to an event. Hey, uh, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Um, Director Brandon and then Director Elliot. Uh, CIO, just a sec. The end. Okay, Director Brandon.
Okay, uh, thanks Chair. I was just wondering if you could give us some idea as to how often, um, your your firefighters are called upon by. Say the RCMP or the ambulance or B C hydro to provide assistance when there's incidents. You know, say accidents along the highway, you know, either to find assistance through traffic control or any.
Um, well, we respond, we respond to any dispatch. So there if there's a motor vehicle incident or hydro lines down or anything like that, we'll often almost always be first on scene. And we do automatically establish traffic control, even though. RCMP's job to do that, often they're shorthanded and. So we'll take traffic control, manage the scene ourselves. We do like to do anyway, cause we. Do a better job. Protecting ourselves. And, uh, it's the same with hydro lines down. I mean, you'll take the the B C hydro courses and make sure we're aware of what, uh, safety needs to be met. And, uh, we make sure that the public is kept safe when there's a electrical incident as well, right? So. Uh, that'd be storms, trees down, all that stuff. So we often respond to that and we'll be there. We'd be there for an hour or two before hydro shows up. Calls like that and, uh. Multiple incidents will make sure it's safe or leave someone there or put cones out or something to identify the hazard, right?
Do these incidents happen quite often? Like, I'm trying to kind of gauge as to how how much of a burden these responsibilities are on the fire hall in addition to the first responder services and the fire.
So. Traffic control goes hand in hand with securing the scene. So it doesn't matter where it is. Ambulance doesn't typically require it, but there are locations where we provide it anyway. Uh, just to make sure if the ambulance has to park on a on a busy street and that's the only way, cause there's a steep driveway, we'll set up traffic control. It's not at their request, but it's just part of our public service, right? Um, so it's usually tied in with a call we're responding to already. So it's not an extra burden. It's just something that we.
Right, thank you.
Really? Okay. Um. Thank you so much for coming and telling us. You said a few things that made me a little bit curious. Uh, the first thing you said was you upgraded your first responder program. And so what what is an upgrade to a program?
Uh, provincial government has, uh. Askeded or demanded that we all take on extra responsibilities. So. Uh, paramedics on the ambulance, they go to a higher level. Uh. As they download that. All are going to higher levels of training. And so that puts just more demand on us, not only on the training, but on. Uh. On the service we're providing, right?
So it's increased training?
It's increased training and increased service and increased responsibility.
And then the other question I had was, what does a recruitment program look like? Like, what kinds of events do you do? And are you are you also reaching out to youth or any or what kind of practices is your?
Yeah, um, for public engagement, we have usually two or three open houses a year and, uh, we get quite a turnout at those. Um. Well, as we have, uh, Kelly Creek reaches out and we do our kindergarten tour every year. We've also had people speak at schools, right? We've had firefighters speak at the schools for career day and things like that. And we also do the fireworks for Kelly Creek School. We have, so we have events like that. We're very, uh, engaged with the community.
Good effort. That was my questions. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Jack, I think you guys do a fantastic job with the fireworks, by the way. It's the best we have in the whole area.
Yes, as long as they're legal, I guess we don't know how that's gonna.
Well, south of town anyways, eh?
You're not going. Is there anything further Malaspena, yeah, directors, that said thought, and then the CIO?
Good Chair. Um, I really appreciate the service you gentlemen provide. Uh, I don't know if you knew this, but there are three retired first responders on this board, at least three. Three I know of anyway. Including myself, uh. I have to say that during the time I worked for B C ambulance here. Early on, I, uh. I came back to Powell River both almost twenty years ago. Job transfer, uh, into the station here. I found that their. Communications. Aren't perfect and, uh. It stimulated my interest in in communicating with all the departments here. Just note that, uh, south of Myrtle Rocks and, uh. North of Wildwood. In my experience, B C ambulance never beat. Uh, fire departments. Especially not to Savory.
It's.
So critical interventions were utterly. You you guys did them all. Especially Savory. And in the ten years that I was ambulance chief here. I think I once altered just one little tiny bit of a packaging of a spinal patient on a dock. Uh. I really enjoyed the interactions that, um, I had. I would bring an ambulance through the years, uh. Let the crews tear it apart, you know. Find this, find that, you know, so we could work together. And I I suppose it's an implicit question, but I'm hoping that that's still going on. And I used to really enjoy my annual visits in the spring to Savory to work with first responders over there because. What your department looked after definitely was, uh. You know, was just one level more. More of a job. Uh, and we exchanged, you know, we we all had the same, uh, oxygen bottles and things like that. So that it would just make the work. Really work, cause I know how much you do in looking after the community from a first responder standpoint. So I'm, I don't know if you really need to answer this question, but I'm just hoping that that is still, uh, happening and, uh. I'm sure, uh, manager, ums, uh. Probably can see to. See to it if it's not. I really am kind of out of the loop now, but my heart's still as connected as it ever was. And I. Like I said, I, uh, have a huge appreciation for. All your love. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Safon. CIO.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, good Chair, I've got two questions. Um, thank you, uh, Acting Fire Chief Ashworth for coming in today as well as everybody else that's, uh, on the desk and coming in virtually. Um. I don't think it's. Secret to anybody. It's pretty obvious that Ospeena, the. Primary fire hall between Sultry Bay Ferry and City of Powell River. So guys are going to get a lot of halls that are highway, uh. Certain. Related. You mentioned that first responder. Expectations from the province have gone up. Has increased training. Services that we provide. The the time involved as well as the cost. I want to know from you and from all of you possibly. All of that going on. Is that problematic or concerning to you at all? Know you guys are in it with your hearts for the service. I'm sure you look at things sometimes as well from the colors and scents, time and energy, mineral resource and capacity issues. Well, is that problematic or concerning to you?
It's a a budgetary concern and it is an extra stress to have more responsibility, but at the same time, it allows our members to practice and hone their skills. So that keeps them sharp for future calls when they're. When needed, right? You have a long time in between calls. A lot of your training is is make believe and then. When you get to the event, you might find that there was holes in that and. Had you had more, falls the workload.
Thank you.
The, uh, our first responders or the team is really dedicated to what they do, but it is getting onerous. For them to keep upgrading their skills. And, uh. It takes more and more and more and more time to do that. But the ambulance service doesn't do anything for us about, like, are they gonna pay us to do it? No. We get these callouts for Lethysis. I see, I can see why they do it because some of the places are absolutely horrendous. Few people could not get. Four hundred pound man up a flight of stairs and up a. Sixty-foot embankment. It's just not possible. But that being said, that 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 takes us away from what we're doing. And and. It doesn't seem to me like it's like it's fair that they can just, we push that off onto us. I mean, we don't mind doing it. But it is getting onerous.
Chief Phil Buck, do you have any comments?
Um. Little bit of. Well. Debate going on within our group is the difference in the honorary rate. Um. I know the firefighter has is more at risk probably and going into. More of a hot zone, be it. Fire or. Mechanical rescue, whatever, but. This three dollar difference where they're again seventeen, we're at twenty kind of thing. It's it's a principle. And. The. Increased responsibility and knowledge that the first responders do require. Administering naloxone and injections and epi pens and all all the rest of it, which never used to be the case and administration of certain. Things which we weren't never allowed to do, which we can do now. Um. If the if the honorary was. Flat across the board, I think it'll it's. More healthy for a voluntary environment.
Then my second question, unless, uh, Fire Chief Carlson wanted to. Reject anything?
Um, all I'd say is. For all the stuff that, uh, B C ambulance is putting on, or at least B C E H S is putting on us with the scope expansion and the other training. Um, we've always just been in it for the community, right? We provide a service here. That no one else does because for us. We're remote. Right? It's gonna be an hour or two before B C ambulance can get anywhere near us. Before, uh, anybody's coming. So we've always just done it. For the community and that's been the main driver for all of our volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And my second question, uh. The Chair is. Uh. Acting Fire Chief Ashworth, you mentioned that. I think the words you used were ambulance demands. Increasing. In that. Being, are you? Be suggesting that these are. Subtle or soft downloads? The ambulance. Looking towards you more?
Um. I wouldn't be able to speak to that directly. That's kind of above my grade, but. Um, the demands that are increasing are simply we're getting more people in population and. Uh, an older population moving in. It's not all young families. And so that increases our first responder demands. So. Uh, when B C ambulance does download extra responsibilities to us, that's gonna increase our demands further, but I don't think it really increases our call volume.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a presentation to forward to from Leskidi.
Good day. I am Richard Carlson. I am the chief from Leskidi. We have about thirty volunteers in service. About eighteen volunteers are attend practices regularly.
About eighteen volunteers are attend practices regularly. Uh, we're holding four a month. Um, we have about seven uh, trained firefighters with three probationary firefighters who are just awaiting training. And fifteen first responders. And we also run our own uh, dispatch program and we have about five emergency response coordinators, because um, that's what we decided to do, put it that way. We've had uh, sixteen fire practices, uh, first responder practices and fire practices um, since the beginning of the year. And four other training events, we did a vehicle extrication course, which was really fun, a traffic, emergency traffic control course and then uh, uh, a first aid upgrade to satisfy a worksite requirement. Um, other than that, I mean, it's been a fairly quiet beginning of the year for us. We only had about five incidents. Um, and two of them were vehicle fires and uh, three first response calls. Um, other than that, um, because we're uh, remote in our own little area, uh, we're the only responsive organization who can respond in any kind of a timely fashion to here, right? Um, speaking of B C ambulance download, they require us to go to all of the calls first to tell them whether they should come or not. Yeah. Our main challenge, I'd say, is trying to ramp up our service level and responsibility yeah, in a responsible, sustainable way. Anyway, any questions?
Thank you, we'll open it to questions. Uh, I see Director Falls in.
Uh, thank you, thank you, uh, Chief Carlson, it's uh, really glad to see you on the call here. I have uh, and thanks for the information, that's really good to know, I'm glad to hear, quiet here and uh, uh, three questions and I'll ask them each separate, because they're kind of all very different. One is, of course, um, as you mentioned, the on on the on remote islands like Laskidi and I believe Savory, the first responders do a lot more than in other places, not to not to diminish what other first responders do, but there is no paramedic. So the first responders on Laskidi are responsible to transport uh, through with our with our local ambulance, transport patients to uh, either the 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 wharf or to the the field for helicopter. So I guess the question I would have, you know, this been is about the potential benefit of community paramedic. So there is a program where the province or B C H S can sometimes uh, support a community paramedic in a community, maybe part-time or full-time, so I guess I'd like to hear your thoughts of whether that would be beneficial for uh, Laskidi Island.
I definitely think the paramedic in community uh, program would be very uh, beneficial for us. It would do a couple of things for us. Uh, normally they would have some office hours, so they could have uh, do things kind of like the community nurse does right now, one day a week, but depending on how many days a week we get a paramedic and communicate in community, they can do a lot of the same things, just to a little bit lesser level than a nurse in the community. Um, the other one is if they're here all the time, which is, or for whatever time that they are here, it does mean that there is a paramedic who can do response. Um, obviously can't do all of the same things that a paramedic car with two paramedics can do over on the other side, but it is a paramedic that is here for a larger period of time, that can at least guide first responders. Um, and kind of uh, can authorize a higher level of care or provide a higher level of care in that time.
That's great, thank you for that. And I think, you know, the even if it's part-time or in the summer when it's busy or, you know, obviously a paramedic wouldn't be able to do twenty-four seven, because that's just too much, but even if it was certain hours and other duties. So the second question um, is the helicopter landing site, so a- as we all know, at least most of us know, the the school is going to be rebuilt some. At first it was imminent, now it seems like in the next two years or something that the they're having some budget issue, so it might slow down, I'm not really sure. And there's one of the proposals is to build it on the site used by the helicopter, there's been some, you know, communication to the contrary. We we talked, we met with uh, Vancouver Coastal Health uh, last September, we're in Island Health and Laskidi, of course. And they said it would help us, you know, maybe with communication. So I guess really, is there, is that heli, how important is that field for the helicopter landing site? Do we have other options and how important is it for us and, you know, to to really try to communicate um, uh, clearly with with the health authorities and and the school district about the importance of that site or helicopter?
Um, that site that we're using right now at the school is pretty important to us. We, I've been around the island to various other places and we've had the helicopter land in some other places. But depending on the helicopter we receive, which we have no no say in at all, it's just what's available. Um, the Sikorskis need a much larger landing area, that's the ones run by heli jet. Um, the larger ones that uh, Ascent uses, uh, a little bit smaller than the Sikorskis, but larger than the one they currently use. Um, can land in a slightly tighter spot, but most of our other options are still gonna need some kind of development, which we don't have money to put in for, to develop a helicopter landing zone. Um, so the school's pretty critical at this moment. Um, if if somebody is able to put in some money at some future date, I mean, it's something we might need to look at, but I've heard some pretty horrific numbers of what it costs to put in uh, an approved helicopter landing zone. So it's not something we've been pursuing for sure.
Okay, well, thank you for that. And I know, I mean, I I I just had heard or or someone told me, you know, I know the helicopter landed in other places sometimes, but I think, you know, they're not as probably as common, as big and, you know, there's from the geography. And I think, you know, from my point of view, just so you know, I I think, you know, this is, and and I know B C H S would maybe be, you know, they got the bigger stick and they might disagree, but I think it's B C E H S dispatches the helicopter, they pay for the helicopter, they should actually be responsible for the the, if there's needs to be some infrastructure put there, because if we put it L I V F D meaning and through the taxpayer of Laskidi, um, for a lot of money, then we're beholden to some other rules by, you know, helicopter changes. We gotta spend, you know, fifty thousand or a hundred thousand or whatever to do something. So anyways, that's, we'll see where that goes. Probably, uh, but we're we're working on it, that's good. And the the last one is, uh, you know, I was really, um, you know, I've heard about this live fire, live fire training in facility and and N V F D uses. I think it's fantastic, seeing the videos, fantastic, it's nice to hear it being used. It has, you know, I have mentioned before and I think I talked with you about the possibility of L I V F D members using it and and that doesn't seem to have happened yet, is it? I guess I I want to ask it, is that uh, just a budgetary issue? And if if given that we're just told that there's maybe going to be some training uh, on that in the fall, um, maybe towards the end of the year, you know, sometimes there's surplus, so I could understand in the spring, you can't for, you know, we don't know that the the training budget has to last out, but maybe if 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 in the fall, if you start seeing that there's gonna be some unused uh, training funds, is that a possibility to send up at least some of the senior people? Um, you know, the officers or or, you know, a couple of the firefighters. So is that a possibility and is that something that you may consider?
It is a possibility, but north side isn't particularly convenient to us. Like, we have done live fire training before. Um, but we've gone down to Cranberry on the south side of Nanaimo, because we have a relationship with some of the people there and they've been very generous with us to use their facility, um, which is only one ferry away instead of two. Um, and and we've like chartered a boat before, but it's if Powell River is not close. So
That's true.
Just across the uh, the pond here with Vancouver Island.
And I guess maybe just as a follow-up, I I know there's been um, communication with with uh, Dashwood, there's even a former Laskitian, I think, on Dashwood and uh, and 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 fire department on Vancouver Island side. So do they, you know, when you were working with Cranberry, do they uh, are they just doing it out of the goodness of their hearts? Like, do they, you know, is there, do they charge L I V F D? Are they are they cooperative? Is that pretty uh, pretty good relationship that way, that way?
Yeah, they they charge a nominal fee uh, that they feel they need to in order to cover some of the expenses and it's it's mostly just because the fire departments help out other fire departments, it's pretty good. Um, Al is a a member, a current member of the Cranberry Fire Department, so we've got a relationship through there to talk with them.
That's great, well, thank you. And thank you for taking time out from your day. I know you've you work full-time as well, so and uh, I think uh, I really appreciate you uh, taking the time to uh, give us some information. Thanks, thanks, Richard.
No problem.
Director Paul, I have one very quick question, um, Chief Carlson, and that is on this side of the pond, we have mutual aid agreements that include even the Texas Department. Um, you have that with Park Still or or do you have a mutual aid agreement with anyone?
I do, I I believe there is technically a mutual aid agreement between the other regional district fire departments and us, uh, executing it is unlikely, to say the least. And we have, we have no kind of mutual aid with um, any of the Vancouver Island departments. I'm sure, it's so there's nothing automatic about it. I'm sure if we put out the call that we needed help, then they would come, they would, there would be some people that would come, as well as uh, wildfire is the most likely instance of the use of that, so B C wildfire would definitely come out and help out if it was something they felt they ought to.
Any other question? Seeing no ads, I'd like to thank you all for your presentations. Um, this is my eleventh year on the board and I have not seen these presentations before, so I find them incredibly interesting. Thank you very much. Right, directors, we're going to be going in camera in just a a minute or two, so I'm going to put we now recess, the in uh, public session and take a two-minute bio break. In camera. No, it was approved as part of the agenda. Oh, okay, alright.
Thank you, Fire Chiefs.
Thank you. Go ahead, Director.
I move that the committee move in camera, the meeting be closed to the public on the grounds that the subject matter to be considered relates to matters covered by the community charter under section ninety-one K negotiations and related discussions respecting the proposed provision of a regional district service that are at the preliminary stages and that in the view of the committee could reasonably be expected to harm the interest of the regional district if they were held in public. And on the consideration of whether a committee meeting should be closed in the sub subsection or subsection two.
Executed by Director Southcott. Favor.
Um, Chair, before we uh, I just want to let everybody know uh, uh, that if you will be attending uh, the in-camera portion, we will be, um, you'll be in a waiting room and you will be admitted about five minutes from now. And that those attending who are presenting in the open meeting, uh, we will be coming back to do the open meeting after this portion of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, yeah, so there there are some people here joining from Nevada, you will be in a waiting room and we will meet you once we've done the business we had to. This is a perfect time to have a little sandwich.
Yeah, no kidding, you gotta keep up the energy.
Slight.
We're live streaming.
You been warming up?
Yeah, I did. I'm gonna go clear air.
Negative twenty. Negative twenty Celsius. Negative twenty Celsius.
Everybody here not ready?
Recording in progress.
Okay. It's on. An email asking for a later start date on our meeting over at the committee on the
It's coming.
Nope, right at night. I don't know.
I'm scared.
You could probably support it as well.
Elliot, your deputy has contacted me about asking about She's all over it.
Waiting for Go. Great, well, welcome back to Committee of the Whole. We are now on item number five on our agenda. Presentations. Oh, sorry. Delegate, number six, delegations. And I'd welcome Maggie Fromm from the Municipal Partnerships. Food Cycle Science Free Cycler Municipal Solutions. I apologize for the delay. Sad thing to deal with. Thank you.
That's Thank you so much for having me. I'm just gonna share my screen and I'll jump right into my presentation. Okay. Putting it into presentation mode should be switching over there. Okay. Hope you can all see that. So, good afternoon, board members and staff. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Maddie Fromm. I am the Municipal Partnerships representative at Food Cycle Science. And I'm here today to present a food waste diversion opportunity for the Cathay Regional District. I, some context on how I got here. So, a few weeks ago, I presented to the city of Powell River. And they thought that they liked the, the concept and said, since waste is managed by the regional district, that I should present here as well. So, my presentation, I'm keeping Powell, Powell River in mind, but I want to note that the solution I'm presenting could be used in the electoral areas as well. This is a, and I know you have organic waste. So, there's green bin in Powell River and then there's a self hauling in the electoral areas. And this solution is a complement to those types of ongo, already in place solutions. So, Food Cycle Science is a Canadian company. We're based in Ottawa and we're 100% focused on food waste diversion solutions. And we do that by using our innovative technology called the Food Cyclr. So, our in-home food waste recycler is sold direct to consumers. You can find it on our website or on Amazon. We also sell to businesses and we partner with classrooms through not-for-profit organizations. And then we also partner with municipalities like yours through our municipal solutions division. And that's the area that I'm focusing on today. So, we're currently working with more than 150 Canadian municipalities. You'll find us in nine provinces, two territories. We are in rural and remote areas, all the way to highly populated cities. And nearby to you or in DC, we have programs in Sycamore, the District of Kent and the city of Nelson. So, the communities that partner with us all have the same thing in common. You know, they understand that there's an issue when food waste ends up in the landfill and they've decided to make a change. Now, I know you're all aware of the problem with food waste. And that really is that it's avoidable. It makes up a large portion of our household waste. And it's made up of liquid, which is heavy to transport and it freezes in the winter. But overall, when food waste ends up in the landfill, it produces the greenhouse gas methane. So, all of these factors make it that food waste has a problem that actually has a strong municipal impact. One of the impacts to municipalities is that since food waste makes up such a large portion of our waste stream, causes the landfill to fill up quickly. As you know, operating a landfill and managing waste is very expensive. So, if we can start diverting waste, we're gonna be able to extend the lifespan of our landfills and save some costs. Then, as I mentioned, the environmental impact is that organic waste produces methane, which is 25 times, or organic waste in the landfill produces methane, sorry. And that's 25 times more harmful than CO2. So, again, if we can take food waste out of the landfill, we're gonna be reducing our carbon footprint. And then in the communities, putting food waste in the garbage or even the green bin, it's not very nice because it causes odors. And those odors and smells attract animals like bears and raccoons who love to rummage through our trash. So, if we can remove food waste, we will eliminate all of these issues. Now, we often get asked, okay, this is great, there's a problem, but haven't we solved this already? And so, there are a few solutions. As we know, there are green bins. And, and they operate in Powell River. But green bins can be cost prohibitive or operationally challenging to implement in more rural or remote areas. Also, we've seen that green bin programs struggle to get above a 40 to 60% participation rate, which means that some organic waste is still ending up in the landfill. And even though there are troubles, troubleshooting solutions to some green bill, green bin issues like the ick factor, even those depending on the household aren't enough to convince people or help people to use their green bins properly. And then many people might backyard compost in your community. And I'm sure we'd all agree, this is the ideal solution. However, backyard composting still has its challenges. It's not feasible for everybody depending on living situation. It still attracts bears and other animals. And in the winter, it freezes, so it's not a year-round solution. And then finally, the last solution would be to throw organic waste into the landfill. But as I've mentioned, the long-term impacts are costly and harmful to the environment. So, at Food Cycle Science, we've proposed a different way to manage our food waste using the Food Cyclr. We make it easy to deal with and right in the home. Essentially, we've built a small kitchen appliance. It's about the same size as an air fryer or a bread machine. It's very simple to use. You put your food waste into the bucket. The bucket goes back into the machine or the unit. You hit a button and then in a matter of hours, you're left with a dry, sterile, odorless, nutrient-rich soil amendment. It can handle all types of food waste and that includes meat, bones, fish, dairy, pits from avocados and peaches. The machine can be used anywhere with a plug. Most people will keep it in their kitchen for convenience, but you could put it in a basement or a heated garage if you had one. It'll process about one to three kilograms of food waste per cycle. And each cycle takes about four to eight hours to complete. So, it's an overnight cycle. And it uses about one kilowatt hour of power. So, depending on the grid, it's 11 to 15 cents per cycle. And then this resulting soil amendment has many beneficial uses and I'll touch on that. and I'll touch on that in a few slides. So, here's a look at the two units that we would be recommended for, recommending for the regional district. The difference between the two just comes down to capacity and unit size. So, the ECO three holds three and a half liters of food waste and was designed for smaller families or spaces. But the ECO five holds five liters and is recommended for larger families or those who just create more food waste. Both machines are equipped with a refillable carbon filter that eliminates smells that occur during the process. But it's worth noting, if you are keeping this somewhere, you're not going to notice the smells. You don't need to maintain your carbon filter. The machine will work just fine without it. Now, I like to show this image just because it's a really good example of what happens when you run your food cyclr. So, you'll see you have a full bucket of food waste and that reduces in volume up to 90%, leaving you with about 100 to 200 grams of the soil amendment. Now, the soil amendment, we like to call it foodalyzer. It's a dry, sterile, odorless and nutrient-rich soil amendment, has many uses. So, you can add it to your garden right at home. And that's what most people will do with it. But it integrates well into any type of composting system. So, backyard composter, tumbler green cones. It integrates into a leaf and yard waste system as well. Or in your community, you could create a sharing method where it's dropped off at a compost site, a local farm, a community garden. And then it can be added into green bins as well. So, in addition, so from an environmental standpoint, the food cyclr is actually a net negative carbon solution. And what that means, it's similar to using solar panels. When you use the food cyclr to avoid bringing food waste to the landfill, you're actually avoiding more greenhouse gases than you've create in that, in that process. And I think this is a really important thing to note because in this day and age, there's lots of products that are greenwashed. But we've done the science to back up that this product is actually good for the environment. And so, you should feel good about using it. In addition to the environmental impact, the traditional method of managing waste is a heavily burdened system with unrelenting costs from trucking, labor, maintenance. But the food cyclr offers a decentralized solution. So, the food waste that's created in the home can be stayed in the home and used there. The moment that we have a food cyclr in a house, there is an immediate and impactful food waste diversion taking place, which is really nice. One thing we've learned from working with so many municipalities is that residents are really interested in being part of the solution. They want to try new things, they want options. And they really like it when the government brings these options to their community. And you know, with green bins in, in communities, I know lots of people want to use them. Sometimes they just find it challenging. But the food cyclr can help with that. So, it brings something that's innovative and tangible to residents, making food waste easy to deal with. Now, the results from our pilot projects have been overwhelmingly positive. We're able to achieve a 98% participation rate. We have a user experience rating of 4.6 out of five stars, meaning people just like product, find it easy to, to use. And we're seeing a significant amount of net new waste diversion. So, approximately 300 kilograms of food waste is being diverted per household per year using the food cyclr. So, after seeing how well the pilot program goes, many of the municipalities we partner with decide to expand the program to more houses, households in their community. And that's what happened in Nelson, BC. So, they ran two pilot programs. And now they've decided to use it as their organics management solution. So, our program starts with initial 12-week pilot phase to test the viability of the solution in your community. During this phase, residents would purchase a food cyclr at a subsidized rate from you, the municipality. They use their unit, tracking the number of cycles that they've ran each week. At the end, we ask that they complete a survey so we can further evaluate the program's success. We then compile all of those results and present them back to you in a final report. And you get the data to make decisions on future waste management and, and see how well the program went. With this presentation, we would also present a plan for expanding the program to more households in the community. But we would work with staff beforehand to make sure that the plan that's presented matches if your budget needs and wants and desires. So, here's a look at the program pricing. As I've mentioned, it's a subsidy model. So, at Food Cycle Science, we reduced the retail price by 50%. We then asked that the municipality subsidize the cost by a minimum of $100 per unit. And then that leaves residents paying the remaining amount. So, an ECO three ends up being $200 and an ECO five is $300. So, here's a look at some program sizes. So, for the Cathay Regional District, and I was thinking about this with Powell River in mind, I would recommend about 150 units. And so, with a $100 subsidy from the municipality, that would be an investment of $15,000 plus the cost of shipping and taxes. But we're always
One sec, I just need to, my directors were into the red in terms of time.
Okay.
We'll carry on.
I'm, I'm
Carry on then, please, Maddie.
Sorry about that, I'm almost finished. But if there is interest, we can figure out a program scope that's better, better for your needs and your budget. So, lastly, here are some reasons that may resonate with you as you consider whether you should pilot with us. The first is that you have the opportunity to trial this technology at well below market rates. The next is that you'll see some immediate and impactful benefits like waste diversion, lower disposal costs, reduced greenhouse gas emissions and increased green bin participation. But overall, you're able to provide constituents with a low-cost municipal service while being a steward for the environment. So, I welcome the Cathay Regional District as a partner in the fight against food waste as I believe your community is a great fit for the benefits of this program. Today, all I ask is you receive my presentation as information. And should there be interest in moving forward with us, that you ask staff for a report and recommendation. Thank you so much. Sorry, I went a little bit over. I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Hey Maddie, and I'm sure directors will have questions. So, we'll open it up, Director Gisborne.
Yeah, sorry. We have a waste transfer station. We're collecting a lot of organics from around the region. And I, I say these are, you know, for individual homes. Do you have a model that could handle like a whole bunch that is coming from like 100 households can, can all be dumped in together? Or is this more of like one household each kind of?
Thank you for the question. So, we do have larger models that can handle a lot of food waste. They are a considerable price. But yeah, there's, I don't even, there's so many, I don't even know the, the amount. I don't deal with the commercial units as much, but I can send some specs over. But we do just find putting house, putting units in households ends up diverting the most amount of food waste because it puts the power in the people's hands. But all of them are great options.
I have a question, and that is with regard to the, the pilot projects. So, in a municipality, say of 10,000 residents, 100 households, so would you make those available to the public on what basis, like first come, first served? Or how would you divvy them up?
Thank you for the question. So, we're really flexible and work with each community depending on what they would like to do. Typically, we work on a first come, first served basis. But we've kind of seen everything under the sun where, you know, maybe people raffle it off if there's lots of interest. What we do as well is we'll have a list started. And then once those say 100 spots fill up, we'll keep that list open and have a waiting list. So, if there's a decision to add more units to the community, we have those names. But it's a very flexible system. And we're happy to, to do what works for each community.
Any questions at the delegation? Cao?
Through the chair, mention that store this with anywhere and also mentioned heated garage. Is that imperative that this thing be heated area? Or could you, in a shed or something of that nature?
Thanks for the question. It's just recommended that it's stored above zero degrees. So, what my parents do is they don't have a heated garage, but they'll keep it in the garage in the summer months and spring, fall. And then once it moves to winter, they'll bring it to their basement and, and use it there. But yeah, as long as it's above zero degrees, you should be fine. And, and that the unit is out of the elements and covered, that's kind of all that matters.
Really?
Um, so for people who use backyard composting, but might be struggling to keep animals away, when treating it with this composter or adding it to your outdoor compost, prevent animals from being attracted?
Thank you for the question. And yes, that's essentially how it works. So, it's a near, near odorless. There's a little bit of a sweet smell, but it really, it's not as big of a attractant to bears and other animals. We have lots of residents who make comments on this saying that they noticed a significant improvement in their backyard composting systems using the pre-treated, using the food cyclr. So, it does help, yeah.
I'm not seeing any other hands. So, I just have one option. And you mentioned the phrase, like a local service, a regional service. Is that what has happened in most of this local governments? A service would be created to collect a tax requisition to finance. Was that how it's worked?
Yes, that's how it works. I think I'm, I might have missed the beginning of your question. So, I, I hope, maybe if you could repeat it, I might be able to give you a better answer, I think.
No, just wondered if municipalities or regional districts who have adopted or, or for a pilot project, do they create their own service to finance these machines and then make them available?
Oh, yes. So, yes, that is essentially how it works. Everybody is a little bit different. Sometimes it's funded through discretionary funds or we'll wait until it's added to the budget. But it is funded through the municipal, municipalities budget.
Dean, no further hands. Maddie, I'd like to thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciated the time. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry about the delay.
That's okay.
Okay, directors, Director Elliot.
Question for staff in regards to like a grant program that might help residents participate in some, because that be something that could be funded through the existing waste management systems or would do we know? Or is that a more complicated question and needs to go somewhere?
The chair, it is kind of complicated.
So, the
Chair, I saw Ms. Greenin with her hand up. She might have some
And, and Chair, sorry, it's hard to hear the CAO. So, if there's anything important, maybe just a, a small repeat would be nice, thanks.
Okay, so typically
I think that that would need to be examined against legislation and program really, and potential grants do like they're solved.
It seems a little bit like a concept where we're helping households lower their energy costs with, by doing rebates for clean waste wood stove heat pumps or it seems in that category to me. Waste management of energies will pull the arrow. That kind of an idea.
Ms. Greenin has your hand up, so I'll
Um, thank you, Chair. Through the chair, I just wanted to mention that we did, a couple of years ago, we had a, a green, it was like a green composter program where people, and so what we did was we brought in the composters and then, and then sold them to the public. So, I, you know, I think if you, if you direct, that's on, you know, when I look at this, that's sort of what I would think would happen would be we, we would bring them in and then sell them to residents that are interested. But you might want to, you might want to think about, you know, asking staff for a report. Sorry, I can't hear anybody.
I'm asked, I've asked if there are further comments, directors. I'm seeing no hands.
You know, thank you. Having been interested in waste for a long I'm certainly interested in this idea. I compost at home, I think most of us probably do. I know that over the years, the waste plan goes way back. We didn't notice the kind of decrease in particularly organic wastes that we were hoping for in previous years. In recent years, there have been so many other things distracting us from this that we haven't really talked about it very much. And I personally kind of even hesitate to dive into particularly for staff to do. It occurred to me that there are other, like the Community Energy Association advocates and finds grant money. And I'm wondering if it might be worth asking staff to just look into this a little bit, see if there might be something like what Southcott was suggesting that would then compensate the regional district for the upfront investment of $15,000 that the center was suggesting. Wouldn't really be interested in much more with staff than that. But it definitely piques my curiosity and I think there is a, there is a certain population, probably city than with district, but the city is part of the district, so I could support, support this to a certain degree. To make a motion actually.
I have one speaker who's dedicated to street. I'll call you right after.
Hi, next chair. My question is really for this with director. I understand that this, like it came to your so we're not repeating anything, I won't so decide to make any motions for you.
No. We, we actually asked them to come here. A program that was regional in nature, inclusive, better idea. Waste management being broader project, or broader perspective here, including everybody.
Come back to your motion, but let's go, Director Gisborne first.
Yeah. First, this kind of made me think about like the wood stove program that we have is, you know, it's not necessarily solid waste, but it does fit in that solid waste umbrella. I think this wouldn't be as desirable if our organic diversion was still a free drop-off. However, on our agenda, or later on today, those when we get to it, there is some proposals for tipping fees because organics diversion does have a cost. If there is ways to get that weight down that can result in saving people money, I think that would actually be a big help for the municipality because they do large-scale collection. And if they're able to reduce the weight before it shows up at our facility, if we have an organics tipping fee, then that might actually help them. I, I'm not necessarily convinced, send it to staff just yet. I would actually be happy to send this presentation documents to our Solid Waste Management Plan Monitoring Advisory Committee, like our waste management kind of experts and community reps to have them take a look at it. But I don't think they've had at any recent time. So, I don't know, I don't know. I'm going to hear what Director Southcott has to propose.
I just wanted to add that the presenter is from Ontario and probably doesn't understand the jurisdictional structure of regional districts and municipalities in BC, which is, I think, why she didn't address that specifically. And I, I might just add too that the city is at a point right now where I personally feel very reluctant to add almost anything to staff's workload due to the number of absent, absent, or the positions that aren't filled within, within the city right now. Otherwise, I think I probably would have suggested something up the hill. And that could be, you know, I put it down here as a, as an item to ask inquiry further. Quite possibly, you know, relative to Director Branders' comments would be more appropriate for the city in terms of cost reduction, which I guess brings up a question for me. And that is, is the cost of the city based on weight production of organics in the pickup? Or is there, I, I don't understand if that actually would be a cost-saving possibility for the city.
So, maybe we can refer that to Mr. Bowen, but
Thank you through the chair. So, so under the proposed model for our food waste, it is currently charged by weight. Thank you through the Chair. Uh, so, so under the proposed model for our food waste, uh, it is currently charged by weight. That. To me would, would change if the kind of material we're receiving suddenly became lighter or heavier. We still have to cover our costs of, of per load, there's only so much can fit in the trailer. So if all of our material is very light, that we might have to change those fees to compensate and ensure we're still covering our cost. So I, I guess that. Need to be reviewed. We'd have to see the results of a pilot and how much of that even ends up at our facility and how that influences. Our numbers and our ability to cost recover.
Thank you.
Director Southcott, you had mentioned a motion to look for grant funding to. Create a pilot program? And to get some information. If that's not on the table, then we'll open it up to further comments. I hope we're seeing no hands. Director Elliott?
Yeah, I actually like the idea of staff doing sort of a preliminary exploration of. Whether a pilot such as one ser- opposed by the delegate, even if it isn't necessarily with that company, but. Similar idea, it is a possibility for grants. And how that may be beneficial. I actually believe that something like that would be more beneficial to. Household, non-farming households outside of the city, because the city already has a green bin program. People who don't have access to the green bin program and trying to do um, backyard composting and are running into animal issues. Or people who are just putting it into their garbage and getting rid of it, they're paying tipping fees on, on that, on that as well, right? And so, one of the reasons I thought it was better off here at the regional district is because. I've lived in the regional district and the city, in the city, the green bin seems to be working pretty well. So I probably wouldn't need to do anything different than what I'm doing with the green bin, but outside the city is much more of a hassle. Where you don't have a green bin picking up your stuff every week and you have to do it yourself, or you're trying to make outside compost that has. Animal issues, I think this would be a real benefit to people. And they wouldn't even have to bring it into the garbage place at all, because it turns into soils and all kinds of. You know, you can put it in your backyard compost and not have to worry about animals, which is a huge issue. Um, and it would. Be a totally self-sustained unit at your home, household, and so I thought it would be a great way to reduce waste. Uh, give people options, you, you know, decrease greenhouse gases, decrease problems with animals. And then if we could promote through some kind of a granting program such as this is, it, it, it might be really great for waste reduction in our region. And so that's why I pointed it here to the regional district when it popped up at the city. I don't necessarily think that particular. Company or what have you is, is the one we need to go with, but the, the concept and the idea, if it could get some grants would be great. So I would move um, that direct staffed to explore the opportunity for a grant program.
For this initiative.
It's sort of similar, yeah.
Discussion on the motion. Director Fall, Director Brander.
Thank you. I think I, I get the sense that, you know, a few of us are kind of struggling with how, how to move forward with this. I think the concept, you know, this. The specifics, but the general idea uh, could be very beneficial, but the parts I struggle with are twofold. One is. Not wanting to add more uh, workload on, on our staff unnecessarily, because the city might be struggling, but we're struggling here too. And I think we wanna not, you know, do that, and, and I think the funding, and we just passed our budget last month, and I think. You know, to, we, we don't, we're not really in a position to, to suddenly pony up a bunch of funding, so that's why I, I'll, I'll support this motion. But I, I, I also think just to avoid it being two owners on staff, um, or too much added work. It, it's the, I assume, and you know, maybe uh, the corporate officer can clarify, but the uh, generally staffer. You know, looking for grant opportunities on a regular basis is my understanding, and um, you know, this would be just one more, you know, what when. During the filtering process of that, it's like, here's something for fire departments, here's something for whatever. Would that be, I guess, would this be, maybe that the question is for the corporate officer through the chair, if I might. Would this motion add a lot of work, or it'd be just one more criteria that would be considered when grants are coming across various desks in the R D?
Thank you through the Chair. Um, so yes, so staff is always looking uh, for grant opportunities. And this would just go into the hopper of reminding staff to look at for grant opportunities in this area. We wouldn't report back to the board unless we found a grant opportunity.
That, that's great. I'm fully, just to follow up, I'm fully in favor of that approach, because I think if we don't have funding. I don't see, you know, we're trying to, we're, we struggled hard to reduce our budget, and I think, you know, it's gonna be hard for us to. Do other things, especially for at least a year. I'm not averse to it going to the committee. I think the committee, you know, Director Gisborne's idea could be good too. But I think the funding, having a grant opportunity is foremost. We don't, you know, I think if we, if we know there's a grant opportunity, then we know we might be able to do something. So I think that's the first step in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fall. Director Brander, then Director Gisborne.
Thanks, Chair. Um, I, I, I like the concept of having these food composters in the kitchen, but. I live early, I compost our own waste, it's not a hassle, we go outside and dump it in. I think most of my neighbors probably do the same thing, or they have animals that they. Feed waste scraps to, like Director Gisborne over here. Um, so I'd have a hard time spending. I think it was mentioned fifteen thousand dollars to support. It's in the, in the community, seeing as these units are, are not terribly expensive to begin with. I mean, the, the one that they're selling is. It's advertised at six hundred, it's actually on sale four hundred right now, so it's, they're offering it to us for a combined total of three hundred, so it's a hundred dollars off. But there are other units out there, other commercial units, and this is a private company, and, and there's cheaper ones on the market, so. I mean, I'm okay with the staff just keeping their eyes open in case a, a, a grant opportunity comes along, that's not a problem. But I don't wanna put any more burden on staff for this initiative.
Yeah, could I see the motion? I think I'm getting confused.
The corporate officer is crafting what.
What she recalled was that.
Uh, so I'm, I'm open to correction, what I'm trying to say to.
I'm hearing a lot of talk around rams.
Wasn't sure what this word was.
I think it was explore.
Research.
I think it was explore. So that's kind of a word that it's opportunistic in that, you know, don't worry about it, but cry.
Yeah, cuz the presentation that we had was not about a grant, it was essentially like a, a wholesale. Price option where if we buy.
Yeah, and I wasn't trying to zero in on that company or, or.
Yeah, okay.
Anything, but just the idea that if there were some grants that would allow us to run a pilot, you know, we'd like to know about it.
Yeah, so that's where I'm kind of. Like this motion is different than the presentation that we had, um, and I think it's substantially different and. Uh, you know, i- if, if we were more flexible, you know, by still having like eleven point one. I'd be fine with having that flexibility, but since this is so much different than what the presentation was, then maybe this would be better as a notice of motion. Because this is, you know, I thought we were talking about like, say, the presentation was a wholesale purchase of goods. And now we're talking about uh, grant opportunities for electronic home, food composter programs. Um, which is different than what we had on our presentation as a delegation, but. Um, I'm more flexible, but not everyone in the assembly is, so.
So, um, I didn't hear a question in that. Um, Director Elliott, what is, does this reflect what you moved?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if I said programs or pilot, but I'm not sure that there's a huge distinction between that. And so I'm okay either way.
Okay, and Director Southcott, you seconded, so you're okay with this is what you seconded, all right. So further debate. I'm not seeing any hands, so we will call for the question, all in favor. Any opposed? Seeing no opposed, the motion is carried. So there's no um, unfinished business. We are on to correspondence, two items of correspondence. Does anyone wish to pull an item?
Uh, eight point one, please.
Eight, eight point one will become the new nine point one, and I'm going to pull eight point two. So basically, look, I'm nine point one and nine point two. So nine point one, Director Gisborne.
Uh, yeah, the letter is from the President of the Paradise Exhibition Park Society, and they're requesting uh, a board appointment. Uh, as a non-voting member to their uh, their organization, and I recall, I think it was twenty eighteen. Uh, we, before twenty eighteen, our board had made an appointment to the Paradise Exhibition Park Society. Um, and then in twenty eighteen, uh, apparently there was a discussion, and the president at the time of P E P said, well, they didn't want an appointment. And then the discussion of that date, I think it came up and said, well, if P E P's asks for a board appointment, then we'll reconsider. Um, so we've got a request, and I think uh, we should reconsider and we should appoint someone.
Thank you. Further discussion on this item. Are you proposing a motion, Director Gisborne?
Yeah, um, maybe the corporate officer can help me. I, I think I might do this right. Um, I move that the committee recommend the board appoint. Director Gisborne uh, as a non-voting member to the uh, Paradise Exhibition Park Society.
Seconded.
Thank you, Director Lennox. Discussion?
Director Elliott, I support the motion, and if um, if you're Gisborne wanted an alternate, I would offer myself up as an alternate.
I mean, thank you, I'm not sure if that's um, what we're doing, but right now the motion is to appoint Director Gisborne for the discussion. Seeing no hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Okay, um, nine point two is a correspondent from a resident who has had repeated issues with a neighbor. Who, uh, who is burning plastic and styrofoam outside. And although this person has been contacted by authorities um, a number of times to remedy his ways. That has not occurred. Um, when you call, say, the wrap line to report that this is going on. It often takes a, a day or a couple of days before they can send someone out to Texada. Um, and by that time, of course, the fire is long since out. The local police at the R C M P have said they could enforce it if there was a bylaw. Um, regarding burning, open burning of um, plastic and styrofoam garbage, but there is no bylaw. So that is what the uh, writer is writing about, and she is asking, would we consider such a bylaw? So the motion that I would, I guess, put forward is. I hate to say this, for staff to explore, and this is no priority, so you just get to it when you get to it. For staff to explore um, uh, opportunities for uh, no burning or no noxious substance burning. Are you seconding?
Um, I could second, but I also want to ask staff a question to find it. Um, the question might be relevant to whether the, the motion should be approved or not. The question is, um, since it is illegal to do this, we even without a bylaw, is it true that they need a bylaw to, to do anything? And I think the R C M P sometimes say those kinds of things, and it's not true, because there are other laws that they could. That are always.
All right, who's got the hand up? Um, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, I could, Chair. Um, I could offer a little um, background, not on this particular, but. In twenty twenty-one, you all did receive some correspondence from Area A in similar air quality concerns. And so we did some research and a report then. Um, and one of the things we did find, um, you know, perhaps similar to where uh, Director Elliott is going. Is that the province does regulate air quality and does have. Laws in place to do so, and it, and the conversations at that time did indicate that conservation officers and R C M P could enforce. But they did say that's hard to do, to get inside people's homes, especially easier when it's outside. And actually see what they're burning, uh, you know, without warrants. They said that's very hard to do even on the mainland. So questionable whether um, a bylaw was, was necessary at that time. Um, and, and questionable in this case. Um, and, and just bear in mind, when we did look into it, that it, it seemed possible that the board could. We'd need to verify that, could establish a service. Um, but it would need to establish a service to regulate air quality, would need to. Um, consider the service area boundaries, participating areas, the cost for local taxpayers. There'd be some steps towards doing this for a regional district. That, that you'd probably wanna bear in mind, and just given that I did read the letter, and it does appear that it's coming from Vananda. If there really did need a local bylaw, I wondered if maybe they had considered. Um, the Improvement District already does have some fire and burning regulations in place, and, and maybe that might be a more immediate and local. Um, fix, if they truly do need something more than provincial regulations that are already in place.
Thank you. A question, Mr. Thompson, does that, um, the advice that you had that the province regulates air quality, and that's really where the solution lies? Was that advice given to you by the provincial government?
Yes, Chair, at the time, we did speak with the conservation officers here. Uh, again, in a slightly different, but still air quality context, and, and that was their advice, is that they did have the laws in place to enforce. But it was very hard to do it, even for them.
Well, what would you suggest, if I might pick your brain for a few seconds, is the appropriate? Needs to pursue, because air quality is significant as populations age and more, more seniors have air. Um, asthma and breathing issues, what, is there a? A way to explore this?
Yeah, if I could, Chair, I think I would support where Director Elliott, I think, was going, was one would be to encourage a conversation with the R C M P. To, to verify if they can enforce. Issues on provincial highways, why can't they enforce provincial environmental laws? Um, and make them question that, and not just be an immediate push for a local bylaw, and if there is a local bylaw. Given the challenges, how would the regional district be any better at enforcing it, and maybe. Um, a conversation with the Improvement District, who already has, you know, local fire. Um, right in the, right in the village, who maybe then could be a little hard. But our investigations in Area A and with the conservation officers at the time in twenty twenty-one. Said that really this is about enforcement, and it's very hard, even with laws in place, it's very hard if somebody's inside their home, burning something in a wood stove. Really do much about it, even with the laws there.
Speaking about open burning, so they're doing it outside.
Yeah, that's, she's speaking of open burning, though conceivably, yes, it could be in a wood stove too.
Oh, sorry. Either way, I think it's still for them was very hard, but I think if you're looking in a Vananda scenario, I would encourage first. That they look at the province and encourage the police to see if they can enforce provincial regulations, and if not, then maybe. Again, I'd look at, at Vananda as, as the closer to home for everybody there, given that the writer is speaking about Vananda. I assume they're in the Improvement District already.
They are.
So, um, it was no motion seconded, uh, so there is no motion officially on the table. So Director Gisborne, you're next.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about the motion, which means it was seconded, right?
You haven't had it, well, Director.
Here, C I looks to.
So I heard that you were start a motion, I wasn't sure what was said in, in that. Um, and then I heard debate stopped so that a question could be asked to see if we should even proceed with the motion. So I'm not entirely sure that it was intended to continue with the motion. I'll let that be the decision of the Chair or the Assembly.
Okay, so, um, yes, I would like to put this word, and if it is seconded. Um, then I'm not anticipating a lot of work, and there's absolutely no rush for this. But in the meantime, um, I think we could respond to the writer and suggest that. She looked at, um, you know, the provincial regulations and communicate further with the R C M P. So those are my thoughts. Um, were you, yeah, Director Elliott?
Seconded.
I have not yet, but are you seconding it?
Um, I would prefer a different motion.
Okay.
And, um. One of the motion, I would support a motion.
Sorry?
Sorry, I.
I can provide some procedure advice.
Yes, please.
Because only, we have only a mover, you can withdraw your motion. Not in the hands of the Assembly yet, so if you're withdrawing that for consideration of a different one.
Okay, I'll withdraw it and listen to what Director Elliott has to say.
Thank you, Chair. Um, my preference would be for the Assembly to decide whether maybe a letter to the R C M P. Pointing out that this is happening, there are provincial laws that could be enforced. And asking if maybe they, they could help with enforcing the provincial laws, because. I think creating a bylaw would be really, really expensive because then you need avenues for enforcement. And if the RCMP are just gonna enforce a bylaw, why can't they just enforce the existing laws, the provincial laws? Yeah. So, I, I think a conversation with the RCMP or a letter that, that asking staff to write a letter to have the RCP talk to us about that would be more supportive of Vananda than ha- having Vananda talk to us.
Okay, so is there a seconder for that motion?
I'll second it.
Question. Director uh, Gisborne and Director Falk.
Thank you, Chair. Um, this makes me think about what Alina had said. Trying to get a motion on the floor so we can have a discussion, but we haven't fully identified the problem. Now, there's some discussion about having a regional district bylaw, this having, you know, uh, RCMP contact, all that kind of stuff. In twenty nineteen, the provincial government passed the Open Burning Smoke Control Regulation. And according to their own fact sheet, um, plastics, polystyrene, railway ties, fiberglass, all that stuff is a prohibited substance. You cannot burn that under the Open Burning Smoke Control Regulation. From the provincial government's own website, violations of the Open Burning Smoke Control Regulation may result in fines of up to two hundred thousand dollars. The Open Burning Smoke Control Regulation is enforced by the BC Conservation Officer Service. Open burning violations can be reported through the Ministry's Report All Poachers and Polluters Hotline. Now, the letter has said, you know, the, the conservation officer doesn't come over in the middle of the night when the guy is burning. I don't think we have any bylaw enforcement, even if our staff going over in the middle of the night to Texada to, to do those kind of enforcements. However, I don't think we need a bylaw because the provincial government has these regulations and they're supposed to be enforced by the Conservation Officer Service. So, if there is an issue with not getting that provincial service being delivered in the electoral areas, which Texedo Island is, I would be in support of sending an invitation to the conservation officer to come to our board and explain the situation of, are you enforcing the Open Burning Smoke Control Regulation? Because I'm not in favor of the local government taking on services that the provincial government is responsible for through their legislation, through their service provision, and if they're not, you know, picking up the phone or they're not doing their job, we should be advocating to say, province, please do your job. So, that's the solution I think we should go, which is inviting the conservation officer to come to our board and explain, hey, are you guys enforcing the regulations in the rural areas? Because there have been situations in Area B where people have called the conservation officer, the conservation officer came out and actually did enforcement and gave fines for folks that were not burning in compliance. So, it's surprised that they're not doing it on Texada, maybe it's a new conservation officer. Um, but that's the.
We'll share the same person, so we don't have one dedicated to the island, but the motion on the table is to write a letter to the RCMP. And I think if the letter comes back saying, um, you know, this is in the bailiwick of the conservation people, then that's our next step. Um, which would be to invite them to come and explain how they address.
Well, then, then I'm opposed to this motion because we're sending a letter to the RCMP, which is federal, and we should be sending the co- the letter to the Conservation Officer Service, which is provincial. It's provincial jurisdiction.
Thank you. Director Falk, you're next.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I, I'd just like to say, I, I do think we know what the problem is here. I mean, I will disagree slightly, although there's some things Director Gisborne just said that I do agree with entirely. We do what the problem is. We got a letter that articulates the problem. It's, it's, it's burning in violation of the regulation and that's, and thank you. And I thank Director Gisborne for pointing out the exact regulation, because I think that's useful. This is, uh, the issue here is, you know, A, we, we want to be doing what we're able to do, but we do not want to voluntarily accept downloading of the, of the, from the province uh, on, on enforcing a regulation. They put in that regulation for these kinds of reasons and they need to enforce it. And the incremental cost of the province or the RCMP enforcing it is a lot less than us setting up a new service with someone, because the end of the day, it's a person going over there and knocking on the door and saying, hey, cut it out. And if it's our person, we're paying a lot of money to someone to do that as opposed to the already uniformed folk that are doing that. Where, where I would, uh, so I'm in, I'm in favor of writing the letter, but what I would, uh, suggest maybe for the mover and seconder, if they're open to it, um, you know, it could be expanded rather than waiting for it to come back. It could, the letter could go to the RCMP and to the BC Conservation Officers Office or to, to the concert, whatever it's called, um, to the Conservation Officer Service. Uh, and then they would both be getting it, basically asking for both parties to do what they're doing. And then, and then when we get that back, we can immediately reply with, you know, if one of them, if they say that's not our jurisdiction, but if the other one says we don't have the resources, then we can say, please come and we want to talk to you. Or they'll, or, and I'll turn, and in addition to that, I think if this persists, we should consider, you know, meetings at UBCM and, and maybe even resolutions for UBCM related to this, essentially this downloading, but I'll leave it there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
I just wanted to second the amendment, or maybe it's a friendly amendment.
It can be a friendly, and I would agree with that, just corporate officer.
Thank you, Chair. Friendly amendment is if everybody agrees.
Okay, alright. Alright, so the friendly amended motion is on the table, Director Elliott.
I'm in favor of the motion, I think, both Director um, Falk and Gisborne for bringing up those points. Um, the RCMP may be a federally run organization, but they are contract service to both municipalities, local governments and the province, and they tend to enforce laws that are, um, either written by any of those jurisdictions. They have enforcement ability as peace officers to, to, uh, to enforce any laws of, of, uh, application in the area that they're in. And they, and they do have that ability. They sometimes choose not to because they're under resource, but that is not the same thing as having a jurisdiction issue. So, I just wanted to correct that. Thanks.
Chair?
Yes, Director Lennox.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I'm in support of this amendment, and I appreciate the points that have been raised, specifically Director Gisborne. Look, we already pay for this service, right? The regulations are in place and taxpayers are paying the conservation officer to put, to, to enforce this. So, I'm, I like the idea of meeting with them, giving them the benefit of hearing the, the pain points and, and, uh, you know, some of the challenges that they have, but I think, uh, again, we need to aim at the right source and, uh, I'm totally in favor of asking the agencies that actually have the jurisdiction and regulation in place. Thanks.
Thanks, Director Lennox. Um, I'm seeing no further hands, so we will.
So, it was not just outdoor burning, was that outdoor burning of all those banned substances?
A banned substances, substances banned under the Smoke Control Regulation. Smoke Control.
We're not trying to shut down someone's back here.
The correct language is prohibited materials.
Okay.
Prohibited materials under the Open Burning Smoke Control Regulation.
Perfect. We do think this, thank you.
We're all good. We know what we're voting on.
So, all in favor of the recommendation? Opposed, Carrie Shannon. Okay, now we're on to reports and there are quite a number of lengthy reports here, which will probably require a lot of debate, and we have a planning committee meeting. Director Lennox?
Yeah, Chair, I was gonna move ten point one, option one, just to get the ball rolling. I'll speak to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. It was a good report. I appreciate it. I agree with it. Um, the marker boys have been a good improvement and, um, just need to be maintained and possibly expanded in the future, but it's been a major improvement for navigating in there and I can attest to that. Keeping the cost to users as low as possible is always, uh, a focus, so I, I see in the report significant costs to try to even explore the expansion of the lease, so I'm not in favor of that at this point. Uh, our new marine facility that we have to look at in the, you know, fairly near future is gonna obviously require a bunch of homework and probably, um, options around the footprint and what that looks like, so we'll get to it then. And I agree with the educational approach to the QRD's involvement. We need to continue to advocate with, again, back to the province and the feds uh, and, and involving our First Nations, right, in any of these decisions that we make. And really, uh, as the, as the report says, a focus on the environment and safety uh, should be our message for, for voters there, right? And, um, making sure that it gets out to all the savory organizations and media, I see, see that as well, so I'm complete favor. Thank you.
So, are you moving the recommendation?
Already did, already done.
I did, option one.
Okay, thank you. For the comments, for the discussion, seeing no hands, all in favor of the recommendation? Any opposed? Thirty unanimous. Ten point two. Director Lennox.
Yep, thanks, Chair. It's a savory day here. It looks like, um, I'm gonna move, uh, the recommendation, uh, as written there, and if I get a second or I'll speak to that.
Second.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just, uh, again, another good report. This has been a, a bit of a bugaboo for years and we've had fits and starts and, and, um, some kind of improvements or not, but that number two fire hole, um, we need to get it cleaned up. So, while I'd rather see owners, uh, take responsibility for their vehicles, I think it's quite clear, um, um, that it's probably easier just to leave them there than to deal with it. And so, we might not even, we might have people that don't even live there anymore that still have vehicles, we're not sure. Um, again, back to education, ASIC and others and, uh, uh, CIMAC, the Marine Advisory Committee have done a good job, like, especially lately uh, around some of the work, uh, grading the roads and all that. So, it's, it's really isn't fair to other islanders to take, um, take up the very limited spots that we have. And, uh, bylaw five sixty twenty twenty one, uh, very clear about unlicensed, uninsured, you know, the sixty day, um, criteria. Um, very clear. Um, you know, I guess the question to staff is, you know, and we've been asking for this for years, but are there any other options for owners to get derelict vehicles off of the island and is the cost reflected in our report, the, the actual cost or any, any subsidies there? So, I see there's eight hundred dollars for four vehicles. So, you can do the math there, right? Um, I guess that's a question for staff. They probably looked at all the options, but.
Yeah, probably.
To the chair, uh, that's a direct code from, uh, water taxi provider to remove tow and, uh, move to compound.
Okay. Thank you. So, that is the cost for folks. It's good for people on savory if they didn't know. And I see that it's also a concern for Ministry of Transportation and hopefully they will, uh, start doing the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, further discussion on this item, Director Falk.
No, thank you, Chair, and I'll just be brief. I just, I, I wanted to point out the paragraph, which I think is really pertinent, which is staff has spoken to the RCMP, who told us that because the parking lot is private land, that QRD, uh, you know, basically we're in our rights to tow, so I think that's good and that's different than what we had on Laskidi Island and elsewhere with mode, with road sides and so on, where we're really stuck with trying to cajole and twist arms. And the other comment I'd like to make, when, when we're trying to get uh, cars off of the, the license of occupation area on Laskidi, I sent out a number of emails, really uh, becoming stronger and stronger language, telling people, get your cars off, this is costing taxpayers, because even though we have the right to do this, as Director Lennox just said, every taxpayer is now paying for other people's garbage and their abandoned cars, and that's not fair. And those who want them will, you know, some people will allow them to be towed and then say, hey, I'm gonna get my car and take it, and that's not fair either. So, the more people basically almost get the idea, if they get towed, you're gonna have to pay to get rid of, get it, or you're gonna somehow get it off of there. It's not fair. Don't complain about your taxes going up if, uh, if you're letting your car there. So, so there's some social pressure. So, anything that can help along that line would be really, uh, it helped on Laskidi most, I think, uh, all except for two or three cars ended up leaving over a while.
You, Director Falk, uh, Director Elliott, did you have a hand up?
No, thank you. I'm good.
Okay, alright. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no hands, all in favor? You opposed, Carrie Jean Adams? You, Brandon?
Uh, just for the next item, the, the four motions that are underneath it are all connected, and if there's no opposition from the board, I'd like to move all forward and block. The expedite things.
No, I actually would have to express some opposition because I could pick out the first one, but not the subsequent one. So, um, there is no objection, I'd like to take them one at a time. So, the first one, um, is that, um, the draft of the Solid Waste Regulation and tipping fees be forwarded to the board, lady, yep.
So, that's the case. I hope you're asking for a motion for that one, so you can start to debate.
Yes. There are motion on, is someone moving the first motion? Your ten point three.
First one.
Thank you. Discussion on the side. Director Gisborne.
Um, yeah, cuz, so this is six oh two. Um, which is the first part. If we say pass the first part, if we don't pass the other parts, will this still fly? That aren't like, cuz they're, they kind of connected, I'm just quest for, request for clarification from staff. Like, if we pass the first motion, but we don't pass the other ones, CIO is trying to get your attention.
Yeah.
To the chair, if, for instance, a number two, if you just want to modify Schedule A, it'll continue. If you delete Schedule A, and Schedule A won't be part of the option.
Okay, um, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, the first motion is that we forward uh, this, uh, regulation and tipping fee bylaw six oh two to be forwarded to the May thirteenth, twenty twenty five board meeting for first reading through adoption. There's a whole bunch of other parts and other motions that we have to deal with, um, before we can actually send this for first reading and through to adoption. So, I would actually think that we should deal with this motion last. Hello? After we get all of our other ducks in a row, because there are clauses and portions that come on later in other schedules that I, I do find objectionable, um, which I think, uh, our, our chair also, so I'm wondering, should I move to table this motion until it's time that we deal with the other motions?
Okay, I, I'm, I need to think that Director Brander had the right idea to consider them all together. I mean, we can consider all the points we wish to raise, um, at the same time. So, um, with the cooperation of Director Southcott and Director Brander, would you like to withdraw that motion and then we'll move them all things on, or would you like to amend it? Include, um, the four paragraphs.
I mean, what I initially moved was to.
Yeah, was. Yeah, that's right. Um, but I didn't think that was appropriate, but now upon reflection, I do. So, I'm sorry for being. You know, um, there's probably a lot to be said on this. So, there is a motion on the table. Um, it's, would it be your pleasure then to amend that motion to include all four paragraphs?
I didn't make. I'm a little confused. I made the motion initially, but then it was broken up to just identify each or debate each one individually. So, I, I guess I would ask the corporate officer where we are right now, what the proper procedure would be.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you have two things to address. Uh, so we have the original, but I think right now we have the first motion on. If the assembly would like to consider all four together, then I, I think the best thing to do would be get a grants from everybody to do that. If that's not desired, then come up with a new process.
That we table?
Is there is there agreement that we consider all four motions together? Just, yeah. Is that, I'm seeing nods, okay. And does that mean then we're open to the new motion?
Now we have.
So, corporate officer, um, there's agreement that we do all four paragraphs together. So, does that mean that that's now on the table?
Yes, if that's what up you all agree to, then yes.
Okay. Alright, Director Gisborne.
Yeah, this makes me think, again, about Alina. Um, important issues you should deal with at the beginning of the meeting, because now we're uh, getting close to three hours in, we got another meeting, so now we're starting to feel rushed and I think ten point three, ten point four and ten point five, which solid waste management, that's one of our most important services. That's the one that, you know, when we got rid of, you know, the, the cash at the dumps, next thing you know, our phones and everything are lighting up. I would even be comfortable with having a meeting specifically to these three items, because they're gonna have an impact in our community. Um, I was actually thinking that we should forward, um, at least the first block to our Solid Waste Management Plan Monitoring Advisory Committee, where we have, you know, theoretically, community experts and, and people that are, have the experience in waste hauling that can actually have the input to go, okay, this is how this is gonna impact our community and this is how people are going to respond. Uh, because taking a look at the report, um, for ten point three, there, there's two things in. Uh, because taking a look at the report um for ten point three, there there's two things in here. I know I'm gonna, I'm gonna get an earful. Um, hold on, where is it loading? Uh, yeah, here's one. Um, children uh uh under thirteen and pets, you know, must be kept inside their vehicles. Now, we had the fire department present earlier, and they have junior firefighters of eleven to eighteen. So we're saying, hey, if you're eleven years old, you can come out and get geared up and practice with fire hoses, but you can't get out of the car and help your mom and put the garbage in the bin. Um, I have a three-year-old, and he helps with the waste diversion on the farm and going to, you know, businesses and and transfer stations and stuff like that. He's three. Um, if we want our kids to not grow up useless, pardon my language. Um, this is something that like we, the parents want them to be a part of. So I find that objectionable. Um, the other, the next line, scavenging and salvaging of materials is prohibited. I thought this was a resource recovery center, and speaking for myself, when I was like nine years old, I remember going to the dump with my dad, who was the chair of the Solid Waste Management Committee at the time, and digging through the dump and bringing home, you know, goodies that my mom hated. Um, but I actually think I still have one. So I'm I'm looking at this going, you know, I got some issues with some of these items on here. There's a lot of really good work that's gone into this, but I think this whole thing should be forwarded to our solid waste management committee. Um, and and have its proper time, because here we are ten minutes from our next meeting, and we've got a huge amount of very important impactful information and decisions that we need to make. And I guess my question for our staff is, do we have to have this done by May thirteenth? Or is the whole place gonna collapse if we don't get it changed?
Do we have to have it done by May thirteenth, sensitive?
Here's the chair. We're already operating on overtime, so doubt if any extended overtime would things. I would suggest that you be consider postponing all of it for another meeting, whether that be a specific meeting or the next committee of the whole.
Yeah, we could postpone and go through that process, or we could adjourn and fix the time to adjourn, which could be any day at any time as well. So there there's two options, because we are coming to the end of our time here. So when we get to that, we have, I think, I'm just gonna look.
One, there's one other item um after waste management issue, and that was regarding the um update. From Minister Neil. So we could perhaps postpone the waste recovery motions with future meeting.
Uh, thank you. We don't need to necessarily postpone, unless you wanted to consider them at the end of June. We could do that. Uh, we could postpone to end of May. I am working on that. If we want to, or or you could just adjourn and fix the time to pick up this meeting. So if we would be up to you and up to the Assembly, if you wanted to a different day this month and a- address the rest of the items, you could do that as well.
Being makes new businesses kind of sense.
Oh, um, sorry. There is an item of business we need ten point six. So.
Yeah. Um, right, right now, we do have the motion on the table. We could consider a motion to refer the waste management items to a future committee of the whole. And either we do it at the next committee of the whole, or we call a special meeting. I don't know how busy the agenda is gonna be, but we'd have to pick a date for an additional meeting if that is what is that.
Uh, thanks, Chair. Could I suggest that we take these items dealing with the solid waste management um with the R R C and postpone them to a later time, and maybe that time can be determined when we see what the committee of the whole agenda is, if it's gonna be particularly full, then maybe we pick a special time for it. And you'd have to look at calendars anyways to figure that out. If it's not gonna be a particularly onerous agenda at the next committee of the whole, then it could just be transferred to the next committee of the whole, and we could still do uh deal with item ten point six today.
Okay.
Um, I like that. Also, I just wanted staff and everyone to know that I have questions about uh about all of, there's a lot here.
Yes.
And I wouldn't mind the opportunity to, rather than just throwing motions out there to ask clarity around how some of these things work um to be to be user friendly for folks. Um, I had a similar question around the the child thing, and thirteen seems kind of arbitrary, and maybe we don't want to do that. Rather, it should, you know, at the swimming pool, we just say, you have to be next to an adult, basically. Um, so, um, I want to, whenever it gets put on, you have time for proper conversations and questions and to get a sense of how things will be implemented.
Corporate officer.
I may also suggest that this extra time will give um collective officials time to formulate questions and send them into staff so that they can um prepare and bring that information and share it with everyone ahead of time.
Thank you. So the motion is to refer this um then the re- recovery or waste management motions.
Ten point three, ten point four and ten point.
And ten point five to a future committee of the whole. Future meeting, okay, that's fine. All right, and that motion has been seconded. So we are ready to vote on that. All in favor? Any opposed, Jerry? Okay, Director Brander.
Uh, we're at the ten point six now.
Point six, yeah.
Uh, I have a motion. It is slightly modified version of option three. I sent it to the corporate office. So we can do that up on the screen. If I get a second or I'll speak to it.
Sure, I'll second it.
There we go. So it is the option three that is in package, is just suggesting bringing together representatives from all these different bodies, because it seems like there's so much confusion. Um, you hear from one, you hear from the other, some things are conflicting, and we gotta get everybody in the same room to discuss this issue. So um the C I O and I have met with uh the Hagus and the uh corporate office or the the C I O out at Slaman. And they agree that going at this jointly with the nation and us is probably puts us both in a greater position of strength. So I think that if we are able to contact them jointly, it uh it puts us in a better place. And they're amenable to that. I mean, of course, they have to go back to their executive council, but but the Hagus was in support of it.
Right, Lennox.
Yeah, thanks, and I appreciate uh Director Brander's addition to the motion. You know, if from the reports and from what we've heard, it's it's, there's significant impacts to the Lund Water Works Improvement District, the receiver to the users um about the drift application. That's where this started in the tent of the of the motion. But it's more than that, right? The drift application takes away from the the other issues that we're trying to deal with there. But I think it's uh super valuable at this point to be mature enough to step back, and that's what this is saying, is let's involve everyone from A V I C C when we are there, same message. Uh, when I'm meeting with uh Walrus on Friday, just a, you know, same message. Uh, we now have Brittany Anderson, who's listed there as, you know, that's her job is to bring these these ministries and these groups together. And finally, um, you know, even standing on the field in Klaman Lund.
We lost you.
Yeah, it was received well by Klaman, is my point. So uh I'm in full support of option three. Thank you.
Good option presented.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, we'll call for a question. All in favor? Oppose, very unanimous. Which brings us to question period. Is there anyone out there with questions for the committee?
Uh, hello, Chair Glinsky from the Peak here. I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Glinsky. Um, there is a an in-camera uh session.
Did that?
Oh, yeah, we did that, right, okay. So we are um adjourned.
Few minutes to spare.
Oh, I think I think everybody needs a few minutes.
You need a few minutes.
Thanks, everyone. More than a minute. Your next meeting.
Recording stopped.